哦，我得到你的掌声了 不看到任何反应 检，一，二，一，二，一，二 检，检查，检查，一，二，一，二
不，停止 有人能听到吗？继续说话 好的，我会继续说话，在法语频道上 你好，我爱你 好的，我会停止 不，我会继续说话 停止 好的，这是法语，这是法语频道 测试法语，好的，我会 我现在在英语，我在英语频道上说话 英语，英语，好的，很棒 我知道这个好的
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Bonjour mesdames et messieurs. Bienvenue au Conseil municipal de la ville de Ottawa.
Welcome to the city council meeting of March 26.
For those of you who are able to, please rise for a moment of personal reflection and remain standing as we introduce the singers of our national anthem. Thank you very much. If you can remain standing, I'll ask our colleague councillor Cloutier to introduce our very special guest who have come here to sing "O Canada". Councillor Cloutier.
Merci beaucoup, Monsieur le maire.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
This is an un-auditioned choir for youth aged five to fifteen from all over the city but operates rehearsals in at St. Thomas the Apostle Church on Alta Vista Drive. I had the privilege of hearing them and singing with them last December during a Christmas concert. Cette chorale a interprété plusieurs...
This choir has interpreted many pieces during the Christmas party on Parliament Hill and was a part of the unisong celebration which takes place every year at the National Arts Centre and will celebrate the 150th anniversary of Canada in 2017.
...are regular guests of other local area choirs. The crosstown youth chorus was invited to sing the national anthem at the swearing-in ceremony of the new prime minister and his cabinet at Rito Hall November 4th of last year. Chers collègues, mesdames et messieurs...
Dear colleagues, ladies and gentlemen.
...the crosstown youth chorus.
O Canada, our homeland is land, true nation, in all the stars common. Car ton droit s'est porté le pays, il s'est porté la croix. Ton histoire est une épopée, des plus bruyants ses sports. God keep the land, glorious and free. Oh, deschamps, no fly is safe, no cloud. O Canada, we stand on guard for him.
Well, that was just terrific. Thank you very much, boys and girls, and thank you councillor Cloutier.
Merci conseiller Cloutier. Thank you councillor Cloutier for this recommendation.
It's time, it's my pleasure to present the Mayor City Builder Award to Tyson Lefave if he could come forward to the podium. Welcome Tyson. Come on right over here. And also Tyson's councillor Chad Cadre if Chad could join us as well. Je voudrais aussi son conseil, Chad Cadre.
I would also like to invite Tyson's councillor Chad Cadre to join us.
Welcome. Today we have the opportunity to recognize the outstanding efforts of a very special young man. At fifteen, only year, at only fifteen years of age Tyson has turned personal challenge into an opportunity and made unprecedented contributions to his community in doing so. In November 2012 while facing a life-threatening disease Tyson was granted a wish from the Make-A-Wish Eastern Ontario group. With his wish Tyson flew to Los Angeles to meet his hero actor Adam Sandler who does extensive philanthropic work with vulnerable youth while filming his movies. Inspired by the actor's generosity and hard work Tyson set out to share the opportunity he was given with as many youth as possible. La generosity et les efforts de l'acteur Leon inspirait...
The generosity of this actor has inspired him to fulfill some wishes.
...with Tyson's Mission to a Million campaign. Mission to a Million is an ongoing fundraising project to raise one million dollars for Make-A-Wish Eastern Ontario so one hundred local kids can have their wishes come true, a truly lofty goal. Proving that no dream is too big Mission to a Million has resonated with residences, businesses and schools alike. To date Tyson has raised over four hundred thousand dollars which is amazing. Congratulations Tyson. And Tyson has also done much more than raise funds for Make-A-Wish Eastern Ontario. His campaign has inspired his community in Stittsville and the city as a whole. Not only is Tyson raising important funds for Make-A-Wish Eastern Ontario through his actions he's inspiring a culture of caring in his community. Local birthday parties have begun to collect donations rather than gifts and I often see Tyson's picture. I think your picture is in the Stittsville news more than Chad's. He's very jealous. But I often see all of these great initiatives taking place at schools like Stittsville Public School donated proceeds from their annual Santa's Second Sale. And Point of Grace Dance Company donated ten thousand dollars from its annual marathon. Despite the many challenges facing Tyson his perseverance and dedication has paid off. Recently Tyson celebrated the forty-sixth wish in his campaign being granted with no sign of slowing down. In the spirit of a true city builder Tyson often says that every time the funds raised by Mission to a Million grants a wish it feels like having his own wish granted all over again. I'd encourage you to visit Tyson's website missiontoamillion.ca. For your unwavering dedication Tyson to Mission to a Million and your community it's my pleasure on behalf of councillor Cadre to present you with the Mayor City Builder Award. Congratulations and keep up the great work.
Thank you.
Come on over here. Come on right over here Tyson. Stand back a little bit now. There we go.
Now in the beginning just to thank you to the city of Iowa for giving me the City Builders Award and for Make-A-Wish so to get me to where I am today. The one for Make-A-Wish kids told me we're not have that machine to be able to have a wish and trying to make the money funds so that kids don't have to wait for a wish.
Great, thank you.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Bonjour mesdames et messieurs. Bienvenue à la conseilure municipale de la ville d'Orsay.
Welcome to the city council meeting of March 26.
For those of you who are able to, please rise for a moment of personal reflection and remain standing as we introduce the singers of our national anthem. Thank you very much. If you can remain standing, I'll ask our colleague councillor Cloutier to introduce our very special guest who have come here to sing "O Canada." Councilleur Cloutier.
Merci beaucoup, Monsieur le maire.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
The chorus is an un-auditioned choir for youth aged five to fifteen from all over the city but operates rehearsals in at St. Thomas the Apostle Church on Alta Vista Drive. I had the privilege of hearing them and singing with them last December during a Christmas concert. Cette chorale a interprété plusieurs-
This choir has interpreted many pieces during the Christmas party on Parliament Hill and was a part of the unisong celebration which takes place every year at the National Arts Centre and will celebrate the 150th anniversary of Canada in 2017.
Are regular guests of other local area choirs. The Crosstown Youth Chorus was invited to sing the national anthem at the swearing-in ceremony of the new Prime Minister and his cabinet at Rito Hall, November 4th of last year. Chers collègues, mesdames et messieurs-
Dear colleagues, ladies and gentlemen.
... the Crosstown Youth Chorus.
Well, that was just terrific. Thank you very much, boys and girls, and thank you councillor Cloutier. Merci conseiller Cloutier.
Thank you councillor Cloutier for this recommendation.
It's time, it's my pleasure to present the Mayor's City Builder Award to Tyson Lefave, if he could come forward to the podium. Welcome Tyson. Come on right over here. And also Tyson's councillor Chad Cadre, if Chad could join us as well. Je voudrais aussi son conseil, Chad Cadre.
I would also like to invite Tyson's councillor Chad Cadre to join us.
Welcome. Today, we have the opportunity to recognize the outstanding efforts of a very special young man. At fifteen, only year, at only fifteen years of age, Tyson has turned personal challenge into an opportunity and made unprecedented contributions to his community in doing so. In November 2012, while facing a life-threatening disease, Tyson was granted a wish from the Make-A-Wish Eastern Ontario Group. With his wish, Tyson flew to Los Angeles to meet his hero, actor Adam Sandler, who does extensive philanthropic work with vulnerable youth while filming his movies. Inspired by the actor's generosity and hard work, Tyson set out to share the opportunity he was given with as many youth as possible. La générosité et les efforts de l'acteur l'a inspiré.
The generosity of this actor has inspired him to fulfill some wishes.
... with Tyson's Mission to a Million campaign. Mission to a Million is an ongoing fundraising project to raise $1 million for Make-A-Wish Eastern Ontario so 100 local kids can have their wishes come true, a truly lofty goal. Proving that no dream is too big, Mission to a Million has resonated with residences, businesses, and schools alike. To date, Tyson has raised over $400,000, which is amazing. Congratulations Tyson. And Tyson has also done much more than raise funds for Make-A-Wish Eastern Ontario. His campaign has inspired his community in Stittsville and the city as a whole. Not only is Tyson raising important funds for Make-A-Wish Eastern Ontario, through his actions, he's inspiring a culture of caring in his community. Local birthday parties have begun to collect donations rather than gifts, and I often see Tyson's picture. I think your picture's in the Stittsville news more than Chad's. He's very jealous. But I often see all of these great initiatives taking place at schools, like Stittsville Public School donated proceeds from their annual Santa's Second Sale, and Point of Grace Dance Company donated $10,000 from its annual marathon. Despite the many challenges facing Tyson, his perseverance and dedication has paid off. Recently, Tyson celebrated the 46th wish in his campaign being granted with no sign of slowing down. In the spirit of a true city builder, Tyson often says that every time the funds raised by Mission to a Million grants a wish, it feels like having his own wish granted all over again. I'd encourage you to visit Tyson's website, missiontoamillion.ca. For your unwavering dedication, Tyson, to Mission to a Million and your community, it's my pleasure on behalf of councillor Cadre to present you with the Mayor's City Builder Award. Congratulations and keep up the great work.
Merci.
Come on over here. Well, we just get you right over here, Tyson. We're going to play you. Stand back a little bit now. May I say a few words, Tyson? There's more. Would you like to say a few words, Tyson? There you go.
Now, in the beginning, just to thank you to the city of Ottawa for giving me the City Builders Award and for Make-A-Wish so to get me to where I am today. The one for Make-A-Wish, kids told me we're not have that machine to be able to have a wish and trying to make the money funds so that kids don't have to wait for a wish.
Great, thank you. We want Chad to help you with your seat. Yeah, Chad will take that for you. You see, thank you very much for coming. A roll call, please, Madam Deputy Clerk.
Consiglière Manette.
Missa.
Councillor Midic.
Present.
Councillor Harder.
Here.
Councillor Wilkinson.
Present.
Councillor Alshantiery.
Present.
Councillor Cadre.
Present.
Councillor Taylor.
You see.
Councillor Shirelli.
Here.
Councillor Egley.
Here.
Councillor Deans.
Here.
Councillor Tierney.
Present.
Consiglière Fleury.
You see.
Councillor Nusbaum. Councillor McKenney.
Present.
Councillor Leeper.
Here.
Councillor Brockington.
Here.
Councillor Chenoshenko.
Present.
Consiglière Cloutier.
Missa.
Councillor Blay.
Here.
Councillor DeRousse.
Here.
Councillor Moffett.
Councillor Kakish.
Present.
Councillor Hubley.
Here.
Mayor Watson.
You see.
Le cadran matin, Monsieur le maire.
You have the call, Mr. Mayor.
... the minutes, the regular and in-camera minutes of the special meeting of February 8, 2016, and of the minutes of the regular meeting of the 24th of February, l'event cat 58 de mi l'ice. Carried. Declaration of interests, including those originally arising from prior meetings. Esquerra de déclaration d'intérêt.
Are there any declarations of interest?
... as printed, regrets. Councillor Scott Moffett and Toby Nusbaum have advised they'll be absent from the city council meeting of the 23rd of March, 2016. Motion to introduce reports. Councillor Brockington, seconded by councillor Leeper, please.
Thank you, Your Worship, and good morning. That the report from the city clerk and solicitor entitled "Status Update: Council Inquiries and Motions for the Period Ending 18th March 2016, Agriculture and Rural Affairs Committee Report 13, Community and Protective Services Committee Report 10, Finance and Economic Development Committee Reports 11B and 12, Planning Committee Reports 22A and 23, and Transportation Committee Report 12 be received and considered, and that the rules of procedure be suspended to receive and consider a matter arising from the Special Transit Commission meeting of March 23, 2016, with respect to a tentative collective agreement with the Canadian Union of Public Employees Local 5500. Waiver of the rules is being requested, as it is in the city's best interest to consider this matter immediately.
On the motions. Carried. Thank you. So, our first item is the Transit Commission, and we have a motion by councillor Blay, the Chair of the Transit Commission, seconded by the Vice Chair councillor Kakish. And I know the Transit Commission met this morning, and a number of you were at that meeting, and I want to congratulate Transit staff and the Transit Commission for securing this agreement. Councillor Blay, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Therefore be resolved that the Transit Commission recommends that the city council ratify the tentative agreement reached with QP 5500 Transit Maintenance and Transit Facilities Maintenance and Capital Projects Branch Bargaining Unit, and be it further resolved that the terms of the tentative agreement be made public.
Okay. Does anyone wish to speak to the item? I just wanted to offer a couple of comments. One of the most important initiatives is, as we all know, that the city of Ottawa has undertaken since amalgamation in 2001 is the construction of the Confederation Line. This major project stands to transform the city for decades to come. Ce projet va transformer notre ville.
This project will transform the city.
Confederation Line has been to solidify the city's relationship with our employees and their unions. Over the last month, the Transit Commission and city council have concluded collective agreements with the amalgamated Transit Union 279, the Canadian Union of Public Employees Local 5500 being Transit Security Enforcement Group, the Transit Maintenance and Transit Facilities Maintenance and Capital Projects Branch, and Transit Supervisors Bargaining Units. These negotiated settlements cover more than 85% of OC Transit's approximately 2,700 employees, and these agreements will provide a stable foundation for the testing, commissioning, launch, and operation of the Confederation Line in 2018, in addition to all of our important celebrations in 2017 for the sesquicentennial. These four collective agreements reflect the positive and collaborative relationship between the city and our valued employees. I want to take a moment to thank our union partners, many of whom are in the gallery with us today, our Transit employees, our Transit Commission under the leadership of councillor Blay, and members of council for everyone's hard work in maintaining a very positive climate for labor relations at the city of Ottawa.
I would like to thank our employees of the Transit Department.
Motion. Carried. Adopté. Thank you. Reports from the city clerk and solicitor, status update, council inquiries and motions for the period ending 18th of March, 2016. Received. Committee reports Agriculture and Rural Affairs Committee Report Number 13. Rapport numéro treize. L'agriculture et des affaires rurales. Zoning Bylaw Amendment 5371 Boundary Road and part of 5329, 5341, and 5383 Boundary Road. Carried. Community and Protective Services Committee Report Number 10. Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Services Allocation Policy Refresh. Arenas, Sportsfields, and Bald Heimens. We have a motion by councillor Flurry, if you'd like to introduce it, and seconded by councillor Egley, please.
As you know, we had a very good discussion at committee about hours of operation. There was a motion that was presented.
Written by staff, so it follows the direction given to committee, so it goes as follow. It's basically, Mr. Mayor, if you're okay with summarizing, it basically allows, so in the report it writes 5% if there are change in participation rates from year to year, up or down. And at committee, I had initially spoke of 30%. This motion is more reflective of this discussion we had at committee, which is an increase of up to 10%. So the "Therefore be it resolved" reads as follows. Approve that the allocation policy be revised to allow up to 10% annual adjustment to facility allocation to reflect validated user group needs.
Okay, so that's moved by councillor Flurry, seconded by councillor Egley. On the motion. Carried.
Mr. Mayor.
Councillor Harder.
I wanted to have staff comment on it.
Okay.
Because, you know, I don't think, like, we, some of us, were part of this, part of this allocation process. And this is news to me, so I want to understand what it is that's changing.
Mr. Chenye, can you give us your comment on this motion?
And if you support it.
Mayor, the motion before you from councillor Flurry recommends the increase of a 5%, from 5% recommended in the report to 10% in terms of delegated authority to staff. In the year after the adjustments that will be made as part of the recommendations of this report, staff were recommending that in order to take into account new emerging needs, either growth in existing sports or new emerging sports that might come to us for allocation, that we have the ability to take up to 5% of the existing envelope of time and dedicate it towards meeting those new needs. The motion before you would increase that to 10%. Staff consulted on 5%. That was the number that was circulated to the community, both as part of the 2010 consultation to the community and then the 2015 consultation as well. And we use that number because we thought that after a year of major adjustments, which will be the year that's coming up if council approves this report, there will be a need for some stability for groups in order to adjust to the new reality of whatever their allocation might be. When staff looked at it, we thought that 5% would suffice in order for us to make most adjustments by way of perhaps understanding what 5% means in the context of arenas. That would mean about the ability to handle about 1,000 new participants that might come up.
Mr. Chenye, this is obviously going to be a bigger issue, so we're going to go through the consent agenda and we'll come back to it. And this is a good example, councillors, please consult the Chair of the committee and the people who are on the sponsor group, and don't bring these motions forward because it does a disservice to the people who've done all the heavy lifting on this, and my understanding is staff don't support this. So, we're going to have to come back to that. Next, extended beach, supervised beach season. I believe councillor Egley and Deans have found an effective way of extending the beach season and keeping the budget in line, which is great, so councillor Egley, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I want to, I want to thank staff for the work on the file. When they came back to CPS, there was a plan that shuffled dates but didn't effectively extend dates, and I raised some concerns about it at committee, as did councillor Flurry. We had some good discussion at committee, and the Chair suggested that we go off and have a discussion between committee and council, see if we could come up with a solution that would stay within budget but effectively extend the beach, the beach time for the whole city, as opposed to a staggered approach that would have some beaches open and some beaches closed and would have caused a lot of confusion for people. And there was also a level of unfairness in the sense that if you live close to a particular beach, you'd have access. If you happened to live further away, you wouldn't because your beach was closed. So, we met in the interim, and again, I want to thank Dan Chenye and his, and his team for coming up with a proposal that stays within the existing budget, increases beach time right across the city in a consistent way, which is something that we heard from residents last summer, that they wanted the beaches open longer. It's kind of ironic, we're voting on this as there's still snow on the ground, we're expecting a storm tomorrow, but maybe that's all the more reason to support this initiative and get everybody into the spring/summer mode of thinking. So, again, I think it's, it's a, it's a good news story, it stays within budget, it gives residents what they asked for last year, more beach time for families, and so I'd look for your support on this motion. Thank you very much.
Okay. Carried. Great, thank you. And on the report is amended. Carried. Next is Fedco Report Number 11B, Semi-Annual Performance Report to Council 20, Q2 2015 and Q3 2015. Carried. Item number six, Disposition of 2015 Tax and Rate-Supplied Operating Surplus Deficit. Carried. Item seven, Downtown Rito Business Improvement Area Boundary Adjustment. I believe we have a motion, so there may be some discussion on this, so maybe we'll just come back to that as an item that will take a little longer. Planning Committee Report Number 22A, Zoning Bylaw Amendment Part of 6111 and 6141 Hazeldean Road. Councillor Cadre, do you have a comment?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and I do have a motion seconded by councillor Harder for some amendments to the original staff recommendation or report. And basically, I'll just read the "Therefore be it resolved that council approved the following amendments to the zoning bylaw amendment part of 6111 and 6141 Hazeldean Road, Report Number ACS2016." The recommendation is that the residents had asked for some changes to the units, backing on the existing units in the area to reflect the existing units, and that meant basically to change some density units into single-family homes. And based on that necessity, there are some recommendations for this motion to be changed in terms of technical. Item number one, the document one be replaced with a zoning key plan attached to this motion. And item two, that item one of document two detail recommended zoning be replaced with the following. Rezone the subject land shown on document one as follows, and there's, you know, a whole bunch of characters there. Area A from Development Reserve to O1, area B from DR to R3YY, exception, area C from AM9 to 1699, and again with exceptions, and area D from D Development Reserve to RX1.
Councillor, I, I think, because it's quite long, items two and three, it is up on the screen.
That's correct. I just wanted to read the first portion of that, that's all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, great, thank you.
And then the final comment on this is be it further resolved that pursuant to the planning except section 34-17, no further notice be given.
My understanding is staff is supportive of this, as is the Chair of the Planning Committee and the proponents. So on, councillor Leeper, is it a quick question? Should we hold it, or should-
Hold, if I can, I'd like to speak to the items.
You're going to hold it, okay, so we'll come back to that one as well. Next is demolition of 171 Briere Street, a property designated under Part V of the Ontario Heritage Act and located in the Lower Town West Heritage Conservation District, and replacement with a parquet. Carried.
Disent, Mr. Mayor.
Sent by councillor Leeper. Planning Committee Report Number 23, 2015 Annual Report Pursuant to the Building Code Act and a recommendation to reduce building code fees. Carried. Thanks to staff for the good work on the review. Zoning Bylaw Amendment 101 and 105 Champagne Avenue South. Carried. Item number 12, Building Better, Revitalize Neighborhoods Phase Two Initiation. Carried. Thank you to everyone involved in that process. Item, Transportation Committee Report Number 12, Municipal Green Fleet Plan. Carried. Item number 14, Fleet Parts Program Improvements.
Hold, please, Mr. Mayor.
Hold on that one, okay. Item number 15, Ottawa Road 174, Prescott Russell Road 17, Trim Road, Decannon Road, Environmental Assessment Study Recommendations. Carried. Item 16, Business Improvement Area Anti-Graffiti Grant Program Motion.
Can we hold that, Mr. Mayor?
Okay. Item 17, Wayfinding Signage for Children's Hospital of Eastern Ontario Youth Net Facility. Carried. Bulk Consent Agenda. Does anyone wish to remove anything from the bulk consent agenda at this time? No, on the bulk consent agenda as presented. Carried. Thank you. All right, so we'll go back to our first item that we have held, and that is councillor Flurry on the issue of allocation policy. So, Mr. Chenye, do you support this motion? Is it necessary?
Mayor, the additional 5% is, in staff's opinion, probably not necessary, but if the delegated authority is up to 10%, we would of course use our discretion to, to only take what we need in the years that we needed. Staff's original recommendation of 5% I think was sufficient in terms of annual adjustments, and there would be four of those in a cycle of allocation, one each year. But if it's 10%, then we would simply use discretion to keep the adjustments reasonable, which was our commitment during consultation with the user groups, that we would allow them some time to stabilize between adjustments.
I don't know if that was a yes or a no.
We would not recommend 10%. We believe 5% is sufficient, but we can certainly live with the delegated up to 10%.
Okay, so councillor Harder, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and again, I think that everyone could tell when this motion came before us that we were very surprised, especially those of us, I'm looking at my colleague to my right and looking at councillor Tierney, who were, and a couple of others, that were part of the sponsor group that worked very hard on this. This was a very difficult file, and it wasn't enviable to be on the sponsor group in the first place because we knew that there would be a lot of pushback from all of the sports organizations, both in any season. So, with the very tough attitude of Ms. Tremblay, and she was, absolutely, did a very good job, and with her staff as well, under Mr. Chenye's direction, we did this. We made the decision, and it hasn't been, you know, pretty at sometimes- We made the decision, and it hasn't been pretty yet sometimes, but the fact is, it's what we talked to the users about. To change it now is absolutely wrong, absolutely wrong, and in fact, I feel so strongly on it, I would recommend, if that's the will of council, that we actually go back to the public and we consult them again on it, because it was very difficult, and we've, and Ms. Tremblay can go into more detail on that, and it's not right. And it actually defeats the purpose of the sponsor group, especially when the sponsor group people around the table don't even know that this is coming. I understand that there was discussion at committee about the possibility, but there's been nothing in between that, and certainly, the people who are our users and who we support with our sports programs and our facilities are not expecting this, just like we were not expecting it. So, I'm going to ask you, please do not support this.
Okay, thank you, councillor. Councillor Tierney, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I also echo Jan's comments, I think, between Jan and Diane, myself, and a few others that are around the table, we worked very closely with Dan and Ms. Tremblay on this, and I'll tell you, there were some major changes that have occurred in the world of sports to benefit our citizens, to make sure we see more people using the ice, using the fields. At the same time we did that, it took out a legacy aspect that we had to field, we had to have local groups in our communities coming to us, saying, "Well, it's legacy, we should be able to use this." We had to take all that burden on, we had countless meetings, and we actually got back to the community and came to consensus to be able to make this so it's sustainable in the future, so people have access to these fields, to these ranks, and now to go change it last minute like this, we're not really showing any faith with the people we've been working with. So, I'll contain my thoughts on this, I'll echo Jan's thoughts, I know Diane feels very much the same. Look, even there was a time when Keith had people calling his office, and I'm heavily involved in the hockey world, where I'd call him up and explain why we're doing this, why it's going to be a benefit in the future, hours and hours of phone calls and emails, and just to change horses last second, I don't think we're doing a service to ourselves. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, Councillor Tierney. Councillor Shirelli, please.
Thank you, Your Worship. When this was debated by committee, the idea coming out of committee, and it was sort of being dealt with between committee and here, was the idea of going even further to 30%, which I think would create a significant problem. But one of the more fundamental issues here, aside from what the sponsorship group did and resolved to, is the fact that we are delegating the policy to a certain extent here, and this is, in effect, a decision that we should be making, but by delegating it with a margin for change of 5%, we're saying, "Okay, we'll make a decision so far, but unelected bureaucrats will make a decision to vary it by up to 5%." I don't think it's a good idea to have variance with no accountability to the public and the users in the first place, but if we're going to do it, 5%, I think is about as far as we should go. 10%, sure, is much better than the 30 we were dealing with at committee, but 30% variance would have meant that we have virtually no policy, and it's being made up on the fly by the bureaucracy, which may produce a better result in some occasions, but we are the ones elected, we're the ones that are supposed to make the decision. So, I will agree with Councillor Harder and support staying at 5%.
Thank you, Councillor Shirelli. Councillor Deans, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I think it's important to note that the staff don't feel they need 10% and won't use 10%, and we didn't consult on 10%. And I can tell you that the allocations policy has kind of a boring name, but behind that name has been a lot of work. It's a significant change in our approach, it's a much more current change than our old approach, and it is not one that we have done lightly. We've done it every step of the way with the council sponsor group, with a lot of staff effort, and with a lot of community involvement, and a lot of stakeholder involvement. And I think we have brought this forward to a point where it's still going to have some hiccups, and there may be some need for change, and that's why we're delegating the 5% to give some flexibility to the staff to work out those things. But beyond that, it starts becoming a different proposition when you get to a higher number, and that's why I don't think we should do that. I agree very much with Councillor Harder, if we wanted to go to 10%, then we should go back and do it all over again, because the reason that we've gotten to this point is because we did the homework with the community, and we've been trying to consensus build and to change it on the floor of council at the last minute is really not good faith, it's not goodwill, and I think it would just ultimately lead to people feeling that we tell them one thing and do something else, and I don't think that's good public policy, so I won't support the motion.
All right, thanks, Councillor Deans. Councillor Fleury, please. Oh, sorry, Councillor Midic.
Thank you, Mayor. Without sounding like an echo chamber, I want to say I don't support this either. We debated this at committee, we consulted on 5%, the Ottawa Sports Council was heavily involved, staff did a great job. As much as I applaud Councillor Fleury's ambition to 10%, I do agree that that would have been a good thing to consult on, we didn't. We consulted on 5%, our stakeholders are counting on us sticking to what we consulted with them on, and we need to stick with that, so we can't support this today.
Thanks, Councillor Midic. Councillor Kakish, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I think, I just want some clarification on the context, because I remember at committee, one of the concerns that Councillor Fleury had was creating another historical use issue in terms of the group, so can you speak to that, Mr. Chenier, in terms of how the 5 versus 10 would impact this?
Mr. Mayor, the recommendation in front of you specifically anticipated that once we make the change this year and apply the new process that sets aside historical, that there be a process every year to avoid getting back into the same trap. And so, the 5%, as I said earlier, even though it sounds like a small percentage, actually equates to a significant amount of hours that the city has the ability to transfer in each year of the four years before we do it all again in year five. So, what you're approving today is that for this year, we will wipe the slate clean, redo the allocations based on the formula, we will have 5% leeway in the hour silos of each of our types of facilities, and then in year five, even if there is a bit of a fallback, and we don't believe there will be, we believe there's sufficient hours, year five takes care of that and resets the clock again.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but I think after every year, you'll be coming up with some kind of checks and balances and updates on how that's been going, correct?
Mr. Mayor, yes, as per the request at committee, staff have committed to coming back with a report each year on the delegated authority that's used under this policy, and that will include the types of changes that we're talking about today.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councillor Kakish. Anyone else before Councillor Fleury wraps up? Councillor Fleury, s'il vous plaît.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I feel very sad today. I have to say, for the members who weren't out at committee, we had this discussion, we had a very fulsome discussion, as highlighted by Councillor Shirelli. I started with the discussion around 30%, and everyone around the table said, "You know, Matt, 30% is going way too far, maybe we should reconsider to a number that," and committee at the time was willing to go down to 10% on the spot. But as we gave direction to staff on other items which are included in this report, they also highlight the playoffs, playoff discussion, they highlight also how we track, how the information's provided by the teams. Those are all amendments that came in from committee. My direction to staff fit into that process, but unfortunately, there was a clerk error that didn't carry it to today's council. So, it appears as it's a standalone motion, and I understand for members who were not part of the discussion at committee, you'd say, "What's Fleury doing? He's just bringing a motion." But to be clear, this was, for members that were at committee, they can reflect and say, "Hey, this was discussed, we gave a direction to staff, unfortunately, from committee to council, it wasn't carried over." I just want to correct one element. The only reason why I'm bringing this percentage up is to, so that we don't reestablish an historical issue. We have growth and we have drops in sports, and we as council shouldn't, it should just be an automatic allocation, and staff should be entitled to review. For example, if figure skating increases 1,000% in participation, when ice is giving out the next year, it should be reflected in the overall allocation. It shouldn't have an impact, a political decision on, and I understand that there's a big risk if we go to 30%, but I thought that up to 10%, if there's a huge growth in sport, and that applies not only to ice, it also applies to field, so that's the reason why you have the motion in front of you today. It's reflective of the discussion, remember, we started off at 30, and I was part of the sponsors group, I think there's great work that was done as part of this report, it's a great step in the right direction, it doesn't set the, it really corrects the issue that we had in terms of the historical allocation, the unfair advantage that male hockey teams have had, in this case, over women's hockey teams, but it applies across different sports categories. So, that's the reason why you have this in front of you. If council doesn't support it, it's fine, but I just want, I'm a huge sport advocate, my master's in sport management, I just want to say that I'm concerned that we're just reestablishing a new historical baseline. That is my concern, and that's why I brought that at committee as a direction, and it's unfortunate that it wasn't reflected, and now that I have to bring it in a motion format.
Okay, so I think we're going to have to have yays and nays on this, on Councillor Fleury's motion, please, Madam Deputy Clerk.
Councillor Egli?
No.
Councillor Nusbaum? Councillor Cloutier?
No.
Councillor Taylor?
No.
Councillor Alshantiiri?
No.
Councillor Leeper?
No.
Councillor Wilkinson?
No.
Councillor McKenney?
Yes.
Councillor Minnet?
No.
Councillor Fleury?
Please.
Councillor Tierney?
No.
Councillor Kakish?
No.
Councillor Midic?
No.
Councillor Blay?
No.
Councillor Moffett? Councillor Hubley?
No.
Councillor Harder?
No.
Councillor Cadre?
No.
Councillor Chernoshenko?
No.
Councillor Darousse?
Yes.
Councillor Brockington?
No.
Councillor Shirelli?
No.
Councillor Deans?
No.
Mayor Watson?
No.
Three yays, 19 nays.
Okay, on the main report, as printed on page five of your council agenda, carried? Thank you. The next item that we held was the Downtown Rito Business Improvement Area Boundary Adjustment, and Councillor Fleury and Councillor McKenney, I thank them because they worked the last couple of weeks as a result of the concerns a number of us heard at Fedco about the original proposal, and they've come up with a compromise, I believe, that it's acceptable to all parties. So, I'll ask Councillor Fleury to introduce it, and say my Councillor McKenney, and thank both those councillors for their work on this file.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and there has been a lot of work. I also want to thank Saad Bashir and Jamie Hurst and both BIAs for the collaboration. So, there were, as we just follow, following the Finance and Audit Committee meeting on March 1st, the Downtown Rito Business Improvement Area has agreed to remove the parcel of land located north of George Street to York, between Cumberland and King Edward, from their proposed expansion. And whereas the Downtown Rito BIA and the Bywood Market BIA have agreed to develop a formal operating agreement outlining a process for joint pageantry and programming on the south side of George Street, and whereas the Downtown Rito BIA has also agreed to remove Confederation Park from their proposed expansion, whereas the Downtown Rito BIA has provided assurance that they will not approach any business organizations in the area within the Somerset Ward in the future without the knowledge of the council of the ward, and whereas the Downtown Rito BIA has notified the director of the Downtown Museum of the financial implication to joining the Downtown Rito BIA, and whereas city staff has no concerns with the revision to the proposed Downtown Rito BIA boundary expansion, therefore be it resolved that city council approve that Document One, Proposed Boundary Adjustment Map, be amended to reflect the removal of the parcel of land located near the George to York between Cumberland and King Edward, and remove the Confederation Park from the proposed expansion of the Downtown Rito BIA improvement area.
Thank you. I just had one question, it said, notify the director, I think you meant, of the Bytown Museum of the financial implications. My understanding was they were not going to be assessed, same with the NAC, is that the case, because I don't think we want to burden the Bytown Museum with a...
Correct, so my understanding is the board is aware that there's a PILT process, which is the federal agreement, but that the Rito BIA board, and that's still in discussion, needs to just waive that PILT, and that the executive director and the board chair were comfortable with that.
Okay. Councillor Alshantiiri, who's our Chair of the Council of BIAs?
First of all, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to thank both my colleagues for working together on this motion, but I didn't hear discussion what with the Ottawa Council on BIA. Did staff reach out to the Ottawa Council on BIA and have a discussion about this motion? Are they in agreement with this? Because I don't see anywhere here mentioned the Ottawa Council on BIA.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. We did reach out to both the BIAs that are involved with this particular motion, who are members of OCOBIA, and so both Bywood Market and Downtown Rito BIA were consulted heavily.
So, was this motion, from my understanding of what you said, was not sent to the Ottawa Council BIA for their review, comment?
Right, Mr. Mayor. We did not see a need to consult the entire OCOBIA for something that is very specific to the two wards in concern.
Now, we heard that time and time again, there was no need to consult, but then when we meet with them, they say, "How come we were not consulted?" So, please, if you can, anything to do BIA, it should be at least vented or shared with the Ottawa Council BIA, because we have them, we work with them very well, the mayor attends their meeting, and I think it'll be helpful to engage them, we don't have, you know, just let them know this is happening. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Great, thank you, councillor. Any other comments? On the motion, carried? Carried, thank you. The next item that's been held is zoning bylaw amendment, Part of 6111 and 6141. Apologize, on the item as amended, I should have said. Carried. So, this is on Hazeldean Road, I believe Councillor Leeper had asked that we hold this item up. Is this the one? Okay, so it's zoning bylaw, 6111 and 6141 Hazeldean Road. Go ahead, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My understanding is that the substance of the amendment to this motion would ensure that only single-family homes back on to single-family homes with respect to the new development. Mr. Mayor, this committee regularly imposes buildings that are 15, 20, 30 stories, directly adjacent or in very close proximity to low-rise residential houses in the urban core. The only argument that I heard at planning committee with respect to ensuring that singles back on to singles had to do with aesthetics and with property values. I don't see a logical planning rationale here. I am concerned that if we vote for this amendment, that we are setting ourselves up for inconsistencies in how we approach things like aesthetics and property values and our planning rationales for different geographies across the city. I would ask that we not support this. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Harder, please.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor, for the opportunity. When we get the plans of subdivision, etc., that come in, you know, we're always looking at the city for a certain density, we know that, we have a density that we have to achieve in order to sustain our urban boundary, Mr. Mayor, and to value the infrastructure that we have in the ground already. But wherever possible, where we can actually keep the same density, rejig the properties so that we have that neighbor backing on to neighbor, for a lot of reasons, because of the density, for one thing, you could end up with five different fences along a property line. But where it's possible, we do that, and in this case, we were able to achieve compromise with the developer who said, "Yeah, we will, we'll do that, we'll honor those backyards, we'll match them up, we can do that, and we can sustain the density that we need to achieve, and that the city needs us to achieve." And that's exactly what we did, and that's, it's as simple as that. Thank you.
Okay, cue Councillor Cadre, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and that is just one component of this motion. The other components of the motion are, because Minto is developing some new product into the market... the marketplace, and that would be affected if we didn't pass this motion. Having said that, as councillor Harder mentioned, the fact that in the community across the city, there is something called compatibility, and that's why I think part of the reason why this motion was put forward, along with the fact that that's what the community wanted also, in terms of the two locations that they've identified in this motion. So based on that is what I'm asking for councillor colleagues to support this motion, because it's not just a fun facet, one faceted motion, as has been described already this, this morning, but it, it does take into other concerns also in terms of that site plan and that development. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Cadri. Councillor McKenney, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I also won't be sporting this. You know, if we want to talk compatibility, there's often the, you know, the instance where, again, in the urban core, we, we, you know, obviously, we want development, we want density, as the, as the Chair pointed out. We want to make sure that we're using our land to its best value and, and finding that right balance. But there's absolutely no way that I can go back to my residents who live, say, off of Preston on some of those little dead-end streets that are all single-family homes, where we're going to be putting up a nine-story condominium directly across the street and smack dab in the middle of an existing low-rise, single-family detachment unit, dead-end street. So, you know, aesthetics, property value, we ask, we ask others to, to do for the, the good of the city, to make sure that they're, we're intensifying, that we're living near transit, and as far as compatibility goes, I, I agree that we need to do what we can for compatibility, but putting more people into a suburban community is, is compatible, and there's absolutely nothing wrong with using our land that way.
Thank you, councillor McKenney. Councillor Blay, please.
Your much, Mr. Mayor. I, I think the two speakers who are against this have failed to understand exactly what this does. It doesn't actually change the density of the neighborhood. It doesn't change how many units are going into that neighborhood. All it says is that townhomes should back on to townhomes, and single-family homes should back on to single-family homes. So it has nothing to do with changing densities, it has nothing to do with adding more people to the suburbs. Frankly, this is about helping new homeowners in their quality of life. If you have a single-family home backing on potentially to having three or four rear-yard neighbors, I've got two neighbors, one on each side. We can't get together and organize a fence, because we all have different views on the fence. Imagine haranguing seven neighbors to agree, not only to have the expense of the fence, the same type of fence, the whole thing. That's just one example of why this is, this is an important improvement to make in these kinds of communities. And guess what? There is a difference between center town and the suburbs. And if we fail to recognize that difference, we're gonna be hurting the quality of life of suburban residents, and I don't think that's something that either of those councillors proposes we do. So I fully support this motion, and I would encourage all of our new suburban communities to articulate this kind of, this kind of design. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Chernoshenko, please.
I share the exact concerns as my urban colleagues, but I'm actually gonna take a different approach on this as a result. I have been at those meetings where residents from our wards have come out and said, if we approve this, it's going to hurt our quality of life and change the way the street in the neighborhood functions, in the exact same way as I have just heard, if you want to frame it as the suburban argument. So in fact, I'm gonna support this with the expecta- with the expectation that when the same argument is made by people who live on streets that are fundamentally low-rise residential streets, that they be granted a similar form of protection under the same argument. I, it's not that anyone's expecting a downtown neighborhood to look like a suburban one, but I do believe people who have bought, invested, and lived in a street, a neighborhood in a downtown area, that they would similarly not expect wholesale changes and like to feel that a single home will back on to a single, single home, and that we, we really target the uplift to specific types of streets and corner lots, et cetera. So we won't see, we can bring out the pictures. We've had residents come out and show pictures of cases on residential streets in my own neighborhood, where when you look at them, you go, what is that, and how on earth did that happen? I got sent one this morning on Ilmer Avenue, can show it. And so I do believe that that's a valuable principle to uphold. It's why I will support this, and I hope that we can consistently apply that approach across the city. Thank you.
Great, thank you. So councillor Harder swung on, but she did have one item to invite people around the council table to attend. If you'd be very brief, councillor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Because of the comments that we've just heard, it's even more important that I give you a heads-up as to a date, which is April the 5th, after Fedco, about half an hour after Fedco, we're going to have a show and tell on Building Better, Smarter Suburbs, and I'm, clearly, there's a, a need for people who don't have experience living in the suburbs to come out and, and really see what we've been doing, and of course, connected to that is the infrastructure standards review. So I hope everybody will mark their calendars, April the 5th, Building Better, Smarter Suburbs and Infrastructure Standard Review. Thank you.
And I think if you could send an email around-
We will.
-that would be helpful as well, because we have two members of council who aren't here. Okay, so on councillor Cadri's motion, seconded by councillor Harder, yays and nays have been called. Madam Deputy Clerk?
Councillor Egway?
Councillor Egway?
Yes.
Councillor Newspom, conseil Cloutier?
Oui.
Councillor Taylor?
Yes.
Councillor Alshantiiri?
Yes.
Councillor Leeper?
No.
Councillor Wilkinson?
Yes.
Councillor McKenney?
No.
Conseil Manette?
Oui.
Conseil Plery?
Oui.
Councillor Tierney?
Yes.
Councillor Kakish?
Yes.
Councillor Midic?
Oui.
Councillor Blay?
Yes.
Councillor Moffett? Councillor Hubley?
Yes.
Councillor Harder?
Yes.
Councillor Cadri?
Yes.
Councillor Chernoshenko?
Yes.
Councillor DeRusse?
Yes.
Councillor Brockington?
Yes.
Councillor Shirelli?
Yes.
Councillor Deans?
Yes.
Mayor Watson?
Yes.
20 yays, 2 nays.
Okay, so on the report as amended, please, carried. All right, so our next item that's been held by councillor Hubley is item 14, Fleet Parts Program Improvement. Councillor Hubley, had a question?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I do have a couple of questions for staff, and this is, as a result of following what was said at committee and comparing to some of the points that were brought up in the audit on this program. So when Mr. Wiley sits, I'll start, so. So the first question I have for you is, is the same option of bringing it back in-house being considered for tires?
Through the mayor, the tire contract is now changed, and it's, we've got new providers for the tire supply, so it's a different model altogether.
Thank you. And when you put together the business case to support this decision to reverse the program, were other options considered before we brought it all back into house?
Through the mayor, definitely, there was other options considered. We did a number of things. We hired a third-party organization consultant to look at the model. We did vendor meetings with not just the current vendor, but all different vendors in the community, and that's how we arrived at the current business model, which, by the way, is not the same as the business model prior to NAPA. It's a different business model.
Thank you. And under the, the new way of bringing it back in-house, how are we gonna compare the performance of the existing solution versus the new solution to know if this is a success this time?
Through the mayor, we have two main performance measurements that we track. One is our downtime, so we want to see our downtime of our fleet improve, and we think that we're confident it will, because there'll be a much more effective and efficient way of getting parts. And then the other measurement we'll be taking a look at is how the part prices come in when we tender out for the parts.
What about delivery time?
Delivery time will be, through the mayor, delivery time will be covered off in the contract, in the contract specifications, and we'll make sure that the vendors adhere to that.
Can you tell us what happens to the six management-level positions that were put in place as part of this process?
Through the mayor, I'm not quite sure what the councillor's getting at.
When, when we opted to contract out the parts, did we not create six positions to manage that contract and to manage the parts inside? I thought there was something under the Service Ottawa piece, that there was jobs that were going to be taken off the book or redistributed elsewhere, but there were some new positions being created to manage this.
Through the mayor, the fleet transformation, Service Ottawa project, which was an entire fleet-wide change, did, did result in some pluses and minuses. The net result was 12 FTs were deleted in fleet, but we didn't create specifically management positions to manage this actual contract.
So there's a net reduction, that is what you're talking about. So those positions you talked about deleted, they were not taken off the books? They were, those people were found other jobs within the city, correct?
Through the mayor, the, it was done through attrition, but they were taken off the books, 12 FTs.
So the City of Toronto and other municipalities have a parts management contract, and from what we were able to see in their proposals, they were following what the City of Ottawa was doing in 2011, and based their proposals on ours. Toronto just renewed theirs. How come they're having success and we're not?
Mr. Mayor, yeah, Toronto is the other municipality, I believe, in the country that is using NAPA in the same fashion that we were, and I don't have specific details about their contract. We can get those for the councillor, though.
Good, thank you. And my last question is, I'm curious as to why it took an audit of this program that came in in 2011, why it took the audit to point out that there was problems here, and now with only a month or two left in the contract, we're scrambling to, to fix things here. I'm concerned with the management of the contract over the time. Legal had put certain performance measures into that contract. Penalties were, could have been applied. There, I believe the audit showed there was lost revenue that could have been collected under the penalty clauses. Can you, as, my last question to you, hopefully, can you just explain what happened there? Why did we not catch that?
Mr. Mayor, we have been working with NAPA, the vendor, since the inception of this contract, trying to make the contract work, and it's been a long process, I agree. We've also been working on, and we had a contract for a set date, that, that contract is up come this summer. So we were, while working with the contractor to try and make the contract work, we were also getting prepared for the end of the contract, and that's what this report is representing.
So if I may, one follow-up to that. Can you assure council that all other contracts and any future contracts that are going on, that you will have, to make sure that what's in those contracts is followed? When we have penalties and performance measures, that somehow you have that in your process, that you're going to be able to check at least on an annual basis, if not sooner, to see if there's problems with contracts? Can you give us that assurance publicly here?
Mr. Mayor, I, I think I can assure you on this NAPA contract that we held their feet to the fire. We work very closely with our procurement colleagues and our legal colleagues to ensure that all the provisions are in place, and procurement is a very, very big help in making sure that those contract provisions are followed, as are our staff.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, councillor. Councillor Cloutier, please.
Merci, Monsieur Mayor. Just a couple of follow-up questions, General Manager Wiley, to, to my colleagues' questions. You mentioned two key performance indicators, downtime, part prices. To what extent will you call, please tell me that the, the entire program cost will be a key performance indicator, that this will end up costing us less than the current system?
Mr. Mayor, as laid out in the report, we, we think we can achieve over and above the savings that are identified in the report. However, we won't know that until the parts prices come in. The study we did with a third-party consultant indicated that we could easily achieve similar parts prices to what NAPA were providing us, so the provisions of the NAPA contract had a 10% administration fee on top of the parts price. So we're confident that we can come in much lower, but we don't know exactly how much lower until we get those tenders in.
I might understand that the only other municipality in Ontario or in Canada that had the, this type of contract with NAPA was Toronto? Is that, is that what I heard you say?
Mr. Mayor, many, well, I guess all municipalities would rely on private sector vendors to, to supply their parts. However, the model that we had was, NAPA was right in operating our parts counter, and that's, I think, where the model didn't work for both NAPA and also the city.
So it, you said it didn't work. Was it only savings that we were trying to achieve when we went to this model in many years ago, five years ago? Were we right then, or are we right now with, with the model? What has changed?
As the auditor pointed out, Mr. Mayor, that although fleet transformation did result in about a $3.9 million savings and took 12 FTs out of the organization, the parts component, which was part of fleet's transformation, did end up costing us more in, in parts, primarily because of the markup that the vendor required in the contract. The, the other big problem we had with the vendor was that their parts system, their inventory system, had to talk to our inventory system, and we both tried to make that work over the life of the contract, but through technical reasons and other reasons, we couldn't make it work. And that's what led to the delay in some parts. So that was one of the big problems. With this new model, the parts will be coming right into our inventory system, those will be accessed easily by our mechanics, and we think that will greatly increase the downtime problem that we are experiencing.
Just a couple more questions, Mr. Deputy Mayor. You mentioned downtime as being a key performance indicator, it's, it's a major source of costs for companies. How do you measure downtime? Is it electronically measured? Is it by, how do you measure downtime for a, a piece of equipment?
Mr. Deputy Mayor, we have a very robust work management system, so it's measured through downtime through the work order system.
So it is input by, if there is a delay in parts delivery, there is a, a clock, a code, something, something measures it automatically? Is there a report to, that, that can be had for that?
That is correct.
Okay. What are the, what are the risks to this? What happens if we don't approve this today? What are the risks to going to, my first question, what are the risks to going to this new system? What are the transitional risks? What are the performance and operating risks?
Mr. Deputy Mayor, I don't think the, the risks are very low. We've had a very good relationship with the current vendor. We're in the middle of those negotiations to transition now, and they're going quite well.
Okay.
As regard to the legal question that you posed, as a result of the current supplier not being prepared to renew the agreement under the current terms and conditions, as is provided in this agreement, the risk, if this report was not approved, is that come the middle of July, we would not have another supplier if council was not prepared to go with the new in-house model that is being recommended by staff.
So just to follow up to that, if, if we don't approve it, there is no, did we explore any other options? I thought we had a, a four-year option on this contract. Was that at our discretion, at the vendor's discretion? Was it a negotiated option?
So the initial contract was five years, from 2011 until the middle of July of this year. The contract contained a provision which would allow it to be extended by a further The contract contained a provision which would allow it to be extended by a further four years. However, also within the contract, it provided that that extension would have to be under the same terms and conditions as the initial contract. As the general manager has, I think, indicated, the current provider was not prepared to renew the contract under that basis, and that's in part why we are here today with the recommendation concerning the new in-house model.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much. Councillor Blay, please.
Thank you very much. So when we went to this model in 2011, was there a business case done to demonstrate that going outside to NAPA was the best choice?
Through the deputy mayor, yes, there was an overall business case for the Service Ottawa Fleet Transformation project, of which this was part.
Okay, and so that is available somewhere?
Correct.
It's not referenced in this document at all?
Correct.
Sorry, correct it's not referenced or correct it's available?
Correct, it's available.
Okay, thank you. And so the decision to make this recommendation is a result of a third-party analysis. Was that done in a business case format or how was that undertaken?
Mr. Mayor, that analysis was done through an internal team.
I thought it was called Bronson Consulting.
Yeah, that component was for the pricing only, to ensure that if we went out for parts in the forest streams that were identified in the report, that the pricing, we could achieve the same pricing.
So internally, you've done a business case to support going back in-house?
Correct, we have done a business case.
Okay, and so why was that not included with the report to committee?
Mr. Mayor, we can make that available.
Well, it's great, but it'll be available after we make a decision, right? So I guess, why wasn't it included in the report in the first place?
I don't think we normally put them in council reports, but we can certainly make it available.
Well, except for, of course, Fedco and council has passed a requirement that business cases be done for large procurements, even small procurements. So I'm just wondering why that information wasn't part of the package of documents presented at committee? If the work was done, why wasn't it presented as part of the package at committee?
Mr. Deputy Mayor, unfortunately, that was an oversight. I apologize for that.
Okay. Well, I'm done with my questions, Mr. Deputy Mayor, but, you know, we can only go, we had a business case that said it was a good idea to go outside, now we've got a business case that says it's a good idea to come inside. Neither one of them has been shared with council yet. We have direction from this council to have business cases for procurement and for that information to be made available to councillors, and it wasn't. I feel very uncomfortable supporting this, and I feel uncomfortable that whomever is responsible for ensuring that this happens hasn't ensured that it happens. And that needs to be addressed, Mr. Acting City Manager, either by you or by Mr. Cantilak is when he begins very shortly. Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you very much, councillor. So with no more speakers and in the absence of a motion, councillor Blay, you can certainly not support the recommendation if you want. The recommendation that's before us, carried. Dissent by councillor Blay. Dissent by councillor Hubley. Carried with those dissents noted. Thank you very much. The next item is the item number 16, Business Improvement Area Anti-Graffiti Grant Program Motion. This was held by councillor Hubley. Councillor Hubley, you have questions?
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. I just want to, we had a previous motion, I think it's two years ago, came through Fedco and to council, that on cases like this where we're dealing with the BIAs, that we would also involve the Chamber of Commerce and the Board of Trades. I don't see that in this motion here, so I believe we're okay to have this as a friendly amendment. Is that correct?
Sorry, do you have it written out, councillor?
The motion was done two years ago. I'm asking why the Board of Trade and the chambers are not in here, so how do we want to do that? Do I have to continue to do the motion every time?
No, I think you did raise this with me, I recall, just a couple days ago. I'm wondering, we did indicate there are a number of areas of the city that don't have BIAs, but they have Boards of Trades and Chambers of Commerce. So can we ensure that information on this program, the deputy clerk's saying we should add it formally to the motion. So if you want it, maybe the clerk can give us some wording? Just hold for a minute, councillor. But I think maybe to our acting city manager, just remind senior staff that the motion that councillor Hubley raised and other members of council with respect to Boards of Trade, Chambers of Commerce, when something like this comes about, if we could notify those groups in the public consultation process, because they don't have formal BIAs.
All the other positions.
Okay, so councillor Hubley, I think if, I'm happy to second this, if you want to move the motion that in the committee recommendation be amended by saying after a year or two eligible BIAs, and Boards of Trade and Chambers of Commerce where there are no BIAs.
Yeah. Councillor Daruz is saying business, sorry, go ahead, councillor.
Yeah, because you have, I know you have like the Greeley Business Association option, so business, and we'll add in, and business associations.
Yeah, okay. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Happy to second that if you want, or councillor Daruz, would you like to second it?
Sure.
My second question, Mr. Mayor, can I go to it or?
Yeah, go ahead.
The second question is, there's an option one, option two in this report. I have concerns with the recommended option because it doesn't allow us to track that the money is actually being spent on what we give it to them for, and I would like to have something that we, the taxpayer will know that the money that we give them is going towards the anti-graffiti being spent, and I believe councillor McKenney would like to see that money come back as a pot if it's not spent.
Okay, councillor Harder, please.
I just wanted clarification because we have, it's not a lot of money, but it's important money that the BIAs get, so this says the remaining money that's left. Would that mean that the groups that we are adding to would wait till the end of the year to see what was available? I'm just wondering, or would you have to divvy up the pie so there'd be less money available to the ones that have benefited from this over the previous years?
Mr. Wiley, is this your program?
Mr. Mayor, the money would be allocated on an average, a five-year average basis, so the spending pattern of the individual BIAs over the last five years, that's the money that would be allocated. There would be a contingency put aside, so if any one BIA had a bad year in graffiti and had to spend more, there'd be money available for that BIA.
I guess my question is, we have a set amount of money in the pot that we disperse money from. What's the impact on that going to be? If we start adding, we're adding, and I'm not opposed to adding these different groups, by the way. I mean, there may not be as much graffiti in councillor Daruz's ward as there is in councillor Leapers or councillor McKennies, but the fact is, they have an association there that can benefit. But they don't have the same need as they do, just like Barhaven doesn't have the same need as you do either. It's just the way it is. So we add, if we're adding potentially five or more, what's that going to do with, to the original pot? And again, are you going to have to wait until all the first users or the ones that have been traditionally supported take their piece of it, and we understand if they have more needs, and then later on in the year, you're going to be able to give them? Otherwise, I see it as being a question for budget on, do we have to increase the budget by $50,000 or something on this file? Having been around from, you know, when it actually started, when the BIA graffiti program started all those years ago, how are you going to do it?
Mr. Mayor, I think the councillor's correct, that we would use the first year to see where the spending all fell out, and if we did have a budget pressure because the additional groups have added, been added, then we would go to budget time with that pressure.
So maybe we do have to consider this a budget, and I would suggest that the ones that we would add or consider adding, we need to understand what their needs are too before budget. We're not that far away from that consideration anyways, but I think that it's important to do it, because, Mr. Mayor, as you know, like every year, there's a group of us that would love to add adult crossing guards, but it doesn't mean we can afford to do it. I just want to understand how the pie's going to be chopped up and how we can do it and accommodate the needs of other areas of business in our city.
Yeah, I think perhaps the simplest suggestion is that after year one, when we've gone through one full year, we ask staff to bring back a report to Transportation Committee to see how it worked out, because I think we're in uncharted waters, because we've never, you know, BIAs generally have, well, they always have a geographic area that they cover. It's specific, it's known, it's usually retail component, and, you know, Boards of Trades and Chambers of Commerce may not be set up to do the kind of work that a BIA does, but at least give them a chance to potentially seek funds for graffiti, because there's graffiti in every part of the city, unfortunately. So I think it would make the most sense, Mr. Wiley, that after one full year, that you come back to Transportation Committee to see how the project is working and how, you know, if other groups have come and sought funds to see if we need to add more to the budget. Is that reasonable?
Absolutely, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. So we have two people that still wish to speak to this. Councillor Shunishenko.
Yes, thank you. More just a comment from staff about the, BIAs have a certain kind of a status, and they are a designated authority with bank account and a sort of recognized status provincially and municipally. I'm wondering if extending this to other groups, not that I have any objection to extending it to other parts of the city that would be affected, but whether there's a fundamental difference in terms of reporting of how that money is spent that makes this problematic. If not, I can support it, but I had that concern.
Mr. Mayor, I don't see Mr. Bashir in the office, in the room right now. I think he would have to answer that question.
Sorry, councillor Shunishenko.
Well, I didn't get an answer because Mr. Bashir isn't here, so.
Sorry.
I would just raise that concern. I would assume that we would have certain sort of status rules of groups to which we can issue money, and that we need to ensure that outside of eligible BIAs, that the tracking of the money and the reporting system is there, that's part of our own financial management.
Mr. Mayor, we'll discuss it with Mr. Bashir and legal and make sure that we're on solid footing.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Shirelli, please.
Thank you, Your Worship. I just want to make sure that staff, when they deal with this in the upcoming year, assuming it passes, is going to be well aware of the fact that when it comes to eliminating graffiti, speed equals success. So there are some areas of the city that have more graffiti simply because they don't remove it quickly enough, and the slowness in removing graffiti encourages more and more graffiti. And I look at Bell's Corners, it has a policy of, the second it goes up, they get someone out to get rid of it. So it may appear that Bell's Corners has no graffiti or very, is very low on the list of need, but the reason it appears that there's no graffiti is it's taken down immediately, and that's a big discouragement to people out there who are putting it up. So I think staff needs to keep that in mind and not just, you know, take a scan of the city and say, oh, this area has a ton of graffiti, so we'll allocate something to it. If it's not done quickly enough, then it won't be effective. And other areas, if they're, if resources are withheld from other areas where they are acting quickly, they're going to end up with a problem that's actually created by this.
Does anyone have a comment to councillor Shirelli's comment?
No, Mr. Mayor, the councillor is correct, and staff are keenly aware and keep very close tabs to which areas remove, what the speed of removal. We work with our bylaw partners, and we also work with our, obviously, our own graffiti eradication staff and the BIAs.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Shirelli, conseil fleuris, s'il vous plaît.
Mr. Mayor, this, I mean, the inclusion of the other boards is quite interesting, but I think it reflects a broader discussion. Just, Mr. Wiley, could you confirm that right now each BIA has their own contract for graffiti removal?
Mr. Mayor, that's correct.
And have we thought of a process by which we could, right now, we're talking about pooling that money, but also pooling the contract? Isn't there better value if we were to do one contract and allow BIAs to reach out through that contract?
Mr. Mayor, that's a great suggestion, and we'll certainly investigate that.
Because that's what I'm hearing around the table, is that we want quick response to graffiti removal, and perhaps there's a buying power if we pull the amount together. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Great, thank you. Councillor Hubley, to wrap up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just two pieces of information come out that I'd like to ask about. Mr. Wiley said he's going to use the five-year previous spending average. Do we have some way of knowing that that money was actually spent, or is it just the money being handed over? Because you could say we've given somebody $10,000 a year, but we don't know that they spent the $10,000 on what we asked them to do.
Mr. Mayor, it's the actuals.
Okay, thank you. Then that's, the other point, Mr. Mayor, is the issue about including the other groups. It was an oversight in the original motion, because we've already approved this two years ago to include these groups in these types of programs and consultations until they formalize their status more of a BIA, but there's certainly groups out there that we do partnerships or grants with to get this done. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. So on councillor Hubley, seconded by councillor Daruz's motion that's on the screen, amendment carried, and on the main report, as amended, carry. Thank you very much. Disposition of items approved by committees under delegated authority, carried. Motion to adopt reports, councillor Brockington, seconded by councillor Leaper, please.
Thank you, Your Worship, that the report from the city clerk and solicitor entitled Status Update, Council Inquiries and Motions for the Period Ending 18th March 2016, Agriculture and Rural Affairs Committee Report 13, Community and Protective Services Committee Report 10, Finance and Economic Development Committee Reports 11B and 12, Planning Committee Reports 22A and 23, and Transportation Committee 12, be received and adopted as amended.
Carried. Carried, thank you. Motions of which notice have been previously given. First one is motion by councillor Taylor, seconded by councillor Egli. Councillor Taylor, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and this was a motion introduced as a notice at last council. It's on your screens. I won't read all of the wherestes. Essentially, we had made the case, as many municipalities did, to the province of Ontario to allow our municipality to adopt the prudent investor standard, which would allow us to, while still stewarding the tax money that we're responsible for working with well, it would also allow us to invest it a little more wisely, a little more flexibly, so that we could stretch it perhaps a little further. We received a request from the Association of Municipalities of Ontario to support their request to the province, so this motion essentially does that. It reiterates our own request as the City of Ottawa and supports the Association of Municipalities of Ontario. The therefore be it resolved is that city council through the mayor formally expressed the City of Ottawa's support of the request of the Association of Municipalities of Ontario, the local authority services.
the local authority services, and the Municipal Finance Officers Association of Ontario to amend Ontario Regulation 43897 as amended of the Municipal Act 2001 to allow municipalities to invest consistent with the prudent investor standard, if those investments are professionally managed and part of a broader investment strategy which includes the One Investment Program. Thank you.
So this is our treasurer's request, I believe, Ms. Simalek, and thank you for bringing that forward. On the motion, carried. The next motion that has been previously given notice is moved by councillor Brockington, seconded by councillor El Shantiri on photo radar. Councillor Brockington, please.
Thank you, your worship. Community safety, particularly the issue of speeding vehicles in or near residential communities, is the number-one safety issue in River Ward and prevalent across the city. And while other issues exist, we've heard about guns and gangs, drug dealing, prostitution, the severity and frequency of these matters pale in comparison to excessive speeding in our communities. Chief Bordelot of the Ottawa Police Services has made speed and traffic enforcement one of his top three priorities. Mayor Watson has identified speed enforcement and traffic calming as a major focus in our city, and council identified the need for traffic calming measures to be resourced and made it a strategic priority for this term of council. When I speak and or attend public events in my ward, community associations, church groups, daycare, school councils, small businesses, or individuals, the common theme I hear, whether it was a school trustee, when I door knocked during the election, when I visited every business last year, what I hear time and time again is the need to slow traffic down, particularly in residential communities. Vehicles are moving too fast, and they're threatening the safety and security of everyday people who want to be able to walk, jog, take the dog out, play with the kids, bike, or even drive their own vehicle without fear of injury. And there are streets in my ward where people have told me they will not walk, where cyclists have told me they will not cycle for fear of their own personal safety. Is this the community that we want? Is this the city that we want? If we agree there is a speeding issue, we need to consider all options. And as councillors have attempted to employ various methods to address the concerns that are raised, in some cases, speed and volume tests are done to first justify if there is a problem. Residents are encouraged to complete the Make the Right Call online reporting tool of the OPS, to alert them of matters that require their intention and enforcement. I've also worked a great length with public works staff to discuss and debate the merits of potential traffic calming initiatives, and I've held public consultation in select neighborhoods to openly and transparently detail the proposed plans for some streets, seek input and feedback, and conduct pilots to measure success. I don't proceed on whims. I study the issue, determine what the problem is, consider multiple options, and make decisions on what the best way will be to improve public safety. So why request from the province the use of photo radar? Photo radar will expand the options available to the city. It isn't the silver bullet, and like every other calming measure used in the city, I don't envision its widespread use. I envision its use on select streets where other measures have been tried with limited to no success, and on streets where the OPS simply have inadequate resources to provide any continuous speed enforcement presence. For those who argue that photo radar is nothing more than a money grab, I believe their concerns are partially real and justified. It never was nor will be my intent to use this measure to fill Ottawa's coffers, but there are some jurisdictions who use photo radar in excess. If permission is granted, and if council ultimately agrees to proceed with photo radar, I believe criteria will need to be developed openly with public consultation on locations, why it's required, what calming measures were previously tried, the signage that will be employed in neighborhoods, at what speed over the limit will the radar be activated, and the annual reporting of statistics. Mr. Mayor, my, photo radar is not my first choice to enforce speed in Ottawa, but the fact remains that speed is a major concern and a major issue. On some streets, other calming methods are ineffective, and police presence is rare. Over the last month, I forced the city to come to grips with a chronic issue. Are we now prepared to admit we have a speeding problem, and if so, are we prepared to ask the province for permission to consider this as an opportunity in our city? Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Egli, please.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to put forward a motion seconded by councillor Wilkinson that this issue be referred to the Transportation Committee for the meeting of May the 4th, 2016. And I'll explain why I think that's, that's a reasonable way to, to move ahead on this. We all know that photo radar is potentially, well, not potentially, it is a divisive issue in communities. There's a lot of confusion and misunderstanding about how it can be used, when it should be used. We don't have any of that in front of us. We do have staff that are prepared to put together a report, to set out the pros and the cons of photo radar, give us best practices, some sense of how it's worked or hasn't worked in other cities. And I think it's important that we have that. More importantly, however, and is that I believe before we make a fundamental change in how we carry out enforcement, in effect, moving from the police officer at the side of your car to a photo radar system, even if on a limited number of streets, that's a discussion we need to have with the public. This motion leapfrog committee went straight to council and allowed no opportunity for that discussion to take place. No opportunity for public delegations to come forward and tell us why they want photo radar, how they want photo radar, or what, they don't want photo radar, and why they don't want photo radar. There are arguments on both sides of this, and I think to make a significant change like this in terms of how we enforce our streets, I don't disagree with councillor Brockington that speeding is an issue. I think everybody around this table would agree that speeding is an issue in our wards. And in a perfect world, we would have enough police resources to deal with that. That's not happening for a variety of reasons, and that's just a statement, it's not, it's not a negative comment in any way, but it's not happening. As Chair Transportation, I believe it's very important that we have this discussion. We have it in an open, transparent way, and we have it with all of our stakeholders. Not just the people sitting around this table, but we work in partnership with our communities, with our school groups, with our community associations, and we're missing that from this discussion. And I think that fundamentally, we have to open that door, have that discussion with all interested parties before we move forward on this. I'm confident that staff will be in a position to have a report ready for us for the, for the May 4th meeting. And so I would, I would urge my colleagues to, if we're going to go ahead with this, let's make a reasoned, informed, and collaborative decision with our communities as to how we go forward on this. And I, I believe this position was also, or I'm echoing, rather, position raised by some of our local MPPs in the media recently that indicated that, you know, public consultation on this is an important component, and, and I don't disagree with that. Public consultation is possibly the most important component before we move forward on an initiative such as this. Again, I think, subject-wise, it, it lives, it should live at Transportation Committee, and I think, as I say, that process has been leapfrogged. There's no timing issues here, there's, there's no urgency in terms of when the province is going to make the decision, or when we have to have our request in or anything like that. So let's make a reasoned, informed, collaborative decision with our community partners and stakeholders as to how we go forward with that, with this, rather. And the way to do that is to refer it back to committee and have that fulsome discussion along with a fulsome staff report, which will set out the pros, the cons, the best, the best-case scenario, based on looking at other cities, other jurisdictions, and, and inform us, and let us hear from our residents, and make that decision, as I say, in a proper procedural, but more importantly, proper, community-based decision as to how we go forward with this. So I'd ask you to please support my motion along with councillor Wilkinson in seconding it, and refer this back to committee where it should have been in the first place. Thank you.
Great, thank you. So, as you know, a, a motion to refer takes precedence, so the debate on photo radar is not the time now, this is to debate the merits of referring. So if you don't want to speak to refer, if you can take your name on the list, if you do want to, councillor Wilkinson, just on referral, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I want to speak in support of the referral. One of the things I think we need to do when we refer it, I have talked a little bit to some of my colleagues about, like, really doing a pilot project, about looking at different ways in which you can do this, which will not become what people call a cash cow. And these are things I think we can debate if we get it back into committee, and I would urge council members, if they have views on this, to send them to the committee chair, so that when it comes forward, it can be something that, we get the views of the public, and we can then, I think, make a much better decision whether to go forward or not go forward, or forward with some suggestions on it. So I urge you to vote for this motion.
Okay, thank you. Councillor De Ruse on referral, please.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I, I just want to echo what councillor Egli is bringing to the table. It's very important this is go to committee, because there is lots of unanswered, and we need to give the public a time to understand, and we need to understand what we're asking and what we're trying to accomplish with this. Yes, we do agree that we have a timing, we do have a speeding issue in our community, but with our strategic initiative and initiative that we are doing right now to calm, do calming measure in our, in our wards, it's been working very good with these initiatives. So I, I do urge our, my council colleague to support that motion. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, councillor De Ruse. Councillor Harder, please.
I just, I have a question on, on deferral, Mr. Mayor. I'm just wondering what it is we're deferring, because I thought that what we were talking about today was just asking the province whether or not they would allow us, or consider allowing us having the right. I thought that was what we were, what the motion was. So this, to me, is something entirely different, I think, because we're not, we're not suggesting, our, I guess the question is, if we vote for deferral, are we deferring the, the chat of the motion? Because if we're deferring the motion, the motion isn't what councillor Egli is talking about.
Yeah, it's referral, it's not deferral. It's referral to committee. The, the motion is being referred to committee.
Again, the motion is just whether or not we ask the province for the right to.
That's correct.
Not whether or not we actually do photo radar. Okay.
That's correct. Okay, anyone else on referral? On referral, councillor Deans?
Just because councillor Harder just raised that issue, I just wanted to reinforce what councillor Egli said. This is a, when councillor Brockington put this motion on, a notice motion on the agenda, actually sent out to my email list, a request for information from my community, but their thoughts on this, because I really didn't know, and we have not consulted on this. So I can tell you, there's a lot of interest in it, I got a lot of replies, and I just don't think you go and ask the province for something that you don't want. And I think that we need to decide if this is something we want, or that our community would want, before we go asking for it. Because you create an expectation, if you ask for it, that you're going to do that. And I think that it's incumbent upon all of us to go and, and consult the community, and have that discussion with the community, and make a decision if that's really the direction we want to take before we move in that direction. And that's why I think councillor Egli is quite right to refer this to the Transportation Committee.
Okay, so someone called for yays and nays on referral, Madam Deputy Clerk. So that the Brockington, El Shantiri motion concerning photo radar on local streets be referred to the Transportation Committee of May 4th, 2016. We're voting on this motion, yays or nays.
Councillor Egli?
Yes.
Councillor Newspom, conseil Clutier?
Oui.
Councillor Taylor?
Yes.
Councillor El Shantiri?
Yes.
Councillor Leper?
Yes.
Councillor Wilkinson?
Yes.
Councillor McKenney?
Yes.
Conseil Manette?
Oui.
Conseil Fleurie?
Oui.
Councillor Tierney?
Oui.
Councillor Kakish?
Yes.
Councillor Midic?
Yes.
Councillor Blay?
Why not?
Councillor Moffat? Councillor Hubley?
Yes.
Councillor Harder? Councillor Cadri?
Yes.
Councillor Shonishenko?
Yes.
Councillor De Ruse?
Yes.
Councillor Brockington?
Yes.
Councillor Shirelli?
Yes.
Councillor Deans? Yes. Mayor Watson?
Yes.
Twenty yays, one nay.
Okay. Next motion is moved by councillor El Shantiri, seconded by councillor De Ruse on paramedic service. Councillor El Shantiri?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I know my motion is on the screen shortly, momentarily, I hope. In discussion with my colleague, Mr. Mayor, I believe there's a great support for this motion to move forward, but I'd like to take this opportunity to thank you, thanks my colleague, George De Ruse, for seconding this motion, and the Chair of CPC Committee, if you guys can hear us there. Just to, looking forward to review, Mr. Mayor, and I believe if I go back to the therefore be resolved, that understanding the review of the paramedic service and future need will be considered by council prior to the development of 2017 draft operating and capital budget City Council approved. A, the addition of twelve paramedic in 2016 with a part, with part-year budget requirement of $780,000 to be funded from the city's provision for one time and unforeseen, and B, the purchase of four emergency response vehicles at the estimated cost of $260,000, with a growth portion of $220,000 to be funded from the development charge paramedic services account, as identified in the development charge background study.
Okay? For the 67s?
Thank you. Another 1245.
Okay, so, Mr. Mayor, and we, we need, we need the help right now, we need to move forward quicker, and I'm looking forward to further review the Chair had requested from our staff, and I want to thank paramedic staff and the general manager for helping us with this, with this motion, and they are in support of that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
And I don't know what the noise outside is all about, but.
Councillor Wilkinson?
Just a question I have for staff on this, that.
So, Mr. De Monte?
Just hang on a minute. Just hold the fort. They're locking the doors, okay, so let's just shut yourself off for a second.
I'll just stay on, I mean.
Where are they protesting?
Okay, so, thank you, Mr. De Monte will answer the question of councillor Wilkinson.
I haven't asked it yet, because I haven't had him here. It's about funding. Mr. De Monte, I don't know who's going to answer the question, but.
Mr. De Monte, I believe.
Yes.
So councillor Wilkinson, you're on the floor.
I think they did, Jeremie. Yeah, yeah.
Mary Ann?
Yeah, it's not there to answer. I thought that some of our funding for this came from the province, and maybe I'm wrong on it, because I know when it, when it was transferred back to it, is this 100% of our own dollars to get this going this year, and then we're going to be trying to get subsidies back from the province, or are we going after the province to be part of this as well?
Through you, Mayor, the councillor is absolutely right. We would, as, as in our normal process, we normally, any additions, we fund the first year, and then the province automatically adds it to our base and funds there 50% next year. So you'll see 50% of this funded by the province next year.
Next year, but not this year.
That's correct. That is the normal process in our, in the, in the funding principle.
Okay, that's, I was just wondering about that. Thank you.
Okay, councillor Wilkinson, are you satisfied? Councillor De Ruse, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I just want to take this moment to thank you, and councillor Shantiri, and councillor Deans, and city staff, and of course, the general, Mr. Anthony De Monte for working with us in this. This is a very important issue across the city, and this is a core service, needs to be equivalent across all wards in the city, and this motion will help this balance out. So I just want to thank you all for working together on helping us with this motion and improving our paramedic service for the City of Ottawa.
Okay, thank you. Conseil Fleuris, s'il vous plaît.
I would like to underline the effort of my colleagues. We often say that we are a big city, and this is an issue that really affects me, because any- anyone in a, living in a rural area must have the same service as if you were downtown. I have a question for Mr. Demonte. It has to do with the amount of money, I see it here, I understand that, but I'm curious for the subsequent years, what will we do to cover the needs? Because we're raising, we're emphasizing that need this year, but will we have issues in the future with this? Mr. Mayor, the department identified for the coming years in the budget analysis that was done, that in 2017, 2018, we have forecasted some amounts to meet the needs if there's an increase in demand. So it has been taken into account. This year, we crossed the line that where the demand was exceeded our capacity, so if this motion is carried, the problem will be settled, and for the coming years, we have forecasted the needs. Thank you, and I'd like to emphasize once again the efforts made by my colleagues. It's a very, very relevant issue, and it's a basic service for all residents in the city.
I want to thank Deans, the Chair of the Committee, Counsel Elshantiri, and Counsel Derruz, who worked to find a very admirable solution, and to Mr. Demonte and his staff. We very much appreciate it and look forward to the review. On the motion as presented, carried. Motion's requiring suspension of the rules of procedure. We have a number. First one is Counsel Chernoshenko, seconded by myself, with respect to the combined sewage, storage, tunnel, federal and provincial funding agreements. And as you know, the budget included our federal funding in the budget. There was a line item for the budget, which was great news, and we need this, I'm told, relatively urgently to sign off so that we can actually get the, the money flowing. So Counsel Chernoshenko, if you'd like to introduce.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Though it's two pages long, quite simply, it is granting the delegated authority to, double check that, to our, I know it's to our clerk's office, Deputy City Clerk and the mayor, to execute the agreements in partnership with the governments of Ontario and the federal government for the obvious reasons already stated, that we will not have the opportunity to come back to council, to committee and council in order to do that, and time is very much of the essence in this case. Thank you.
Great, so on the rules of suspension, carried. On the motion as presented by Counsel Chernoshenko, carried. Thank you very much. The next item where we are going to have to suspend, the rules of procedure be waived is moved by Counsel Egli, seconded by Counsel McKenney. This was a technical error that was in the budget document, so on the rules of procedure being waived, carried. Counsel Egli, please.
I think, Mr. Mayor, you're quite correct. This was an error made. We had made some changes to the fees for parking, and as a result of that, there was an error made in terms of we're now moving to a spring-summer approach and reducing the, the parking fees. That, there is an issue around timing on that because the desired implementation date for the new system is April the 1st, 2016. So the motion is up on the screen, should be up on the screen, yep. And I believe that it speaks for itself, and what it is asking, just do the therefore be resolved, that council with three-quarters of members present in voting approve the following residential parking permit fees in seasonal categories to be effective on April the 1st, 2016, and then sets out for residential visitor parking, residential per week or less, for up to two weeks, and third category is temporary consideration parking permits per month. And again, this is just to correct an error that was made in the budgeting process. The error is, Counsel Deans, if you look at the second whereas, the specific fees relating to residential visitor parking permits, one week residential visitor parking permits, two weeks in temporary consideration parking, were incorrectly presented and approved in 2016 budget document due to clerical error and oversight. If that was left uncorrected, certain permit holders would be overpaying the parking fees during the summer months and underpaying during the winter months. And therefore, it's just an attempt to bring it all in line so that proper amounts of money are paid depending on the season and the timing of the parking permit. Doesn't change what?
I'm sorry, but I don't have the original document in front of me, so I can't tell what's changing.
Okay, so perhaps what we can do is have staff come up and explain the actual, how the error was made and how it's being corrected.
Mr. Mayor, Kevin Wiley is left, we're trying to, trying to get him back. What we can say about the motion is we support it. It's consistent with the policy going forward, and we're good with this, but I can get Mr. Wiley back to explain.
Is it changing the fees that we approved, and how is it changing them?
One moment, Mr. Mayor. It was an error on staff's part, Mr. Mayor. When we made the changes to the winter, winter and summer fees, we shouldn't have made the change at that point, we neglected to do it. So this was our intent all the time. Yes, we are changing the fees, but it was our intent to do it.
Thank you.
Okay, so on the motion, carried. The next motion requiring suspension of the rules is with respect to acting city manager on suspension, carried. The motion, if we can get it put up, as you know, our city manager, Ken Kirkpatrick, has retired, and he has left the organization a few weeks sooner than we anticipated, and so the, be resolved that the city's two statutory officers, Rick O'Connor, city clerk and solicitor, and Marion Similak, city treasurer, be authorized by city council to act in the position of city manager until May 2nd, 2016, with the specific dates of such service to be determined by the mayor, and that council be formally apprised of the details of same by the existing written notice process. Motion, carried. Do we have any other motions requiring suspension of the rules of procedure? Next, notices of motion for consideration at subsequent meetings. Counsel Fleury, seconded by myself, Counselor.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, so I'll read the motion, whereas the interest in fees charged on a loan from payday loan establishment can exceed by several times the amount of the loan, and whereas there is a clustering of payday loan establishment in areas where financially vulnerable persons reside, and whereas Section 10 of the Municipal Act 2001 permits the city to enact bylaws respecting the economic, social, environmental well-being of the municipality, the health, safety, and well-being of persons, and the protection of persons and property, including consumer protection, and whereas Section 10 and 151 of the Municipal Act 2001 also permits a municipality to license businesses within the municipality, and whereas the city of Brant, of Hamilton, on February 14, 2016 enacted a licensing law amending in respect of payday loan establishment, and whereas the Municipal Act 2001 does not permit other than in respect of adult entertainment establishment, a municipality through licensing to restrict the location or number of establishment of such business, therefore be resolved that city council, 1A, directs direct bylaw and regulatory services to bring a report to Community Protective Service Committee, and council recommending an amendment to the licensing bylaw to require the payday loan establishment to, to be subject to licensing by the end of the first quarter of 2017, and be direct staff to consult with all stakeholders prior to the submission of such report, and reflect the result of these consultation in the report, and to request that the provincial government bring forward an amendment to the Municipal Act 2001 that would permit municipalities to enact a licensing bylaw for payday loans establishment that could limit such establishment by location and number.
Okay, so we'll deal with that at our next meeting. Thank you, Counsel Fleury. The next notice of motion is from Counsel Cadri, seconded by Counsel Hubley, with respect to Canada Post Corporation regarding Fernbank CDP lands and adjacent lands. Counsel Cadri, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and as you suggested, I've mentioned, it is the motion seconded by Counsel Hubley. And basically, just to give the council, just a little tiny background to this, this only affects my area so far, but as the city is growing, there may be other areas to come in the future. What this is, a new community that's being developed in the area that has postal codes from another area rather than the Stittsville Ward area. So I'm just going to read the, first be resolved that the city of Ottawa requests Canada Post Corporation recognize the properties located within the area identified on the attached map as being part of Stittsville, and revise the mailing addresses for these properties to reflect the same, in addition to being located in Ottawa. So that's the motion that we'll be dealing with on the next council meeting, and that's what I'm putting forward this morning. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Great, it's nice to see Counsel Hubley second the motion, a great defender of the boundary between Canada and Stittsville. Always contentious, but...
Or more affectionately referred to as Canada West, yes.
All right, so we'll deal with that in the next. Are there any other notices of motion for consideration at subsequent meeting? See, there's other motion. Motion to introduce bylaws. Counsel Brockington, please, seconded by Counsel Leeper.
Thank you, your worship, that the bylaws listed on the agenda under motion to introduce bylaws, third reading and three readings be read and passed.
Carried.
Carried.
Confirmation bylaw, please, Counselors Brockington and Leeper, please.
Thank you, your worship, that the following bylaw be read and passed to confirm the proceedings of the council meeting of the 23rd March, 2016.
Carried.
Carried.
I don't believe we have any written inquiries. Does the city clerk wish to inform us of what his advice is with respect to the exit and entry of the building?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'm advised that this is an unannounced Occupy Ottawa protest outside. The police have been called as a precaution. If members of council feel they need to, they can go out through the green room. Most of us, we will be opening the doors in the normal course, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. I'd remind members of council and public and the media that the Ottawa 67s have made it into the OHL playoffs, and they'll be coming with their bus and the whole team at approximately 12:40 at the front entrance, where we're going to raise the 67s flag and wish the team the very best in the OHL playoffs. So if you can come to that, get there between 12:30 and 12:40, the team will be there, we'll raise the flag, wish them well, and they'll be on their way to their first playoff game on the Algon Street entrance, that's right. So adjournment, Counsel Brockington, please.
Thank you, your worship, that the proceedings of the city council meeting of the 23rd March, 2016 be adjourned.
Carried. Merci, thank you all very much. Merci, thank you all very much.